Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our Tuesday, June 1, Sioux Falls City Council meeting. Thanks for joining us tonight. We'll go ahead and get started by reading our role, please.
Councilmember Sale, Starr.
Here.
Brecky.
Here.
Erickson.
Here.
Jensen.
Here.
Kylie.
Here.
Nightzert.
Here.
Selberg.
Here.
All right. With us tonight to give our invocation is Pastor Phil Tagg with the Ransom Church. Pastor Phil, thanks for being here. Appreciate it. We'd ask that you rise for his invocation, and then stay standing for our Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father, as I prepare to be here tonight to pray over this body, Lord, what was impressed on my heart was just the reality of what they've led through and the reality of what they're leading into. And so, we just are thankful for the representatives of our city who have brought us through arguably the toughest season that we've ever seen. And yet, there's hope on the horizon, Lord. There's a sense in which normalcy may return. But as I've been challenged personally myself, I just pray for this group of people to not just try to lead us back to what was, to not just try to lead us back to normal, but to take stock of everything we face and to lead us into the future that we need, Lord, into the new normal, which in some ways will be dealing with the realities and hardships in a different way, but also could be brighter than what we've ever seen. And so, I just thank you for the opportunities that lie ahead. I thank you that the future is bright, and I thank you for the group of people who are leading us into it. Would you give them wisdom and courage to do the right thing? In your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thanks, Pastor Phil, for leading us in that tonight. We'll move on to our next item. It's item four, which is our consent agenda, and look for any changes or a motion on that.
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion there, council? All right. We'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That item passes seven to zero. Move on all the way ahead to item forty-seven, then, which is our regular agenda tonight. Look for a motion there, please.
Move to approve. Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve our regular agenda. Any discussion on that, council? All right. Hearing none. Let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Before we go on with the rest of our agenda, just want to review public input for our agenda items, for our regular agenda items. Comments are limited to three minutes unless the item is being presented for final adaption, in which case, public input is limited to five minutes. For regular agenda items, comments are limited to the agenda item under consideration only. During the general public in proportion of the meeting, comments will be no more than three minutes per person. So, with that being said, we'll move on to our next segment.
Item forty-eight is a transfer of 2021 packaged liquor license from Osted's Golf Incorporated. Osted's Golf, 2801 East Tenth Street, to The Root Cell Incorporated, 701 North Phillips Avenue, Suite 150. CUP not required. Item forty-nine is a new 2021/22 malt beverage South Dakota Farm wine license for Hi-Fi Hair LLC, 218 West Thirteenth Street. CUP not required. Item fifty is a new 2021/22 malt beverage South Dakota Farm wine license and 2021 retail wine license for Sandtrap Incorporated, 815 South Marion Road, with conditional use permit 0141682021, being approved on May 5, 2021. Item fifty-one is a request to add video lottery terminals with the new 2021 wine license for Sandtrap Incorporated, 815 South Marion Road. Item fifty-two is a special one-day liquor license for 212 Boiling Point to be operated at The Social, 301 South Thompson Avenue, for a grand opening on June 11, 2021. Item fifty-three is a special one-day malt beverage and special one-day wine license for Downtown Sioux Falls Incorporated to be operated at Eighth and Railroad Center parking lot, 401 East Eighth Street, for an East Bank Block Party on July 2, 2021.
Good evening. Jamie Palmer with licensing. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have on items forty-eight through fifty-three.
All right. Thanks, Jamie. Is anyone from the public here to speak on items forty-eight through fifty-three? All right. Counsel, any questions for Jamie on these items? Look for a motion here to approve?
Move to approve. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion here? All right. We'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Item fifty-four.
Item fifty-four is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located near the northeast corner of Westbrook Drive and South Rosnick Avenue from the RA2 residential apartments, moderate density, to the CN Conservation District, number 14145, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Earhart Griffin and Associates, Damian Graeble.
Good evening, Jason.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Jason Bieber, representing Planning and Development Services. This is an application by Earhart Griffin and Associates. It's located in the middle of the neighborhood, which is north of West Forty-first Street and west of South Ellis Road. It's about 3.69 acres in size. The purpose of this rezone is the applicant's looking at constructing a detention pond on the south side of this property.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counsel, you got any questions for Jason here? Move approval. Nightzert.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Nightzert, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion here? All right. Hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That item passes seven to zero. Next item.
Next item is fifty-five, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at southwest corner of South Cliff Avenue and East Eighty-Fifth Street, from the AG Agricultural District to the S1 General Institutional and REC Recreation Districts, number 14173, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants, Harrisburg School District, number 41-2, Tim Graff.
The applicant here is actually requesting a deferral to the June 15 meeting. They're continuing to have discussions with the subdivision to the west. They've been a little busy with their bond hearing that they had last night, and so, some additional discussions need to have. So, they want that extra two weeks to kind of work with that subdivision to the west, so.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? All right, counselors. Looks like we'd need a motion, then, to defer this to our six-fifteen agenda.
Move to approve. Brecky.
I'd make a substitute motion to defer until the June 10 meeting.
Fifteen.
Second, Kylie. June 15. Sorry.
June 15 meeting.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Motion, a second, to defer this to June 15, then. Any discussion there? All right. Let's take a vote, then.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item fifty-six is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 259th Street and North Marion Road, from the AG Agricultural District to the I2 Heavy Industrial and CN Conservation District, number 14171, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Sioux Falls Development Foundation, Bob Munt.
The applicant here is Paul Cornesayer Associates. This is located north of I-90 and east of North Marion Road, just north of the existing foundation park. This is the north section. It's about 442.1 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at subdividing this 440 acres for future heavy industrial uses.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, any questions for Mr. Bieber here? Look for a motion on it.
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve item fifty-six. Any discussion here? All right. We'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That item passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item fifty-seven is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the southwest corner of South Southeastern and East Bison Trail, from the AG Agricultural District to the S1 General Institutional REC Recreation and O Office Districts, number 14172, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Harrisburg School District, number 41-2, Tim Graff.
The applicant here is Paul Cornesayer Associates. It's located at the south of East Sixty-Ninth Street and west of South Southeastern Avenue, just southwest of the Roundabout. It's about 33 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is the location of a new Harrisburg Middle School will be on this site.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this topic tonight? Counsel, do you have any questions here?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Counsel Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve fifty-seven. Any discussion, council? All right. Hearing none. Let's take a vote on it, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That item passes seven to zero. Item fifty-eight.
Item fifty-eight is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 4400 East Sixtieth Street North, from the AG Agricultural District to the CN Conservation and EST One Institutional Districts, number 14187, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Sponsor is the mayor.
The applicant and owner here is the city of Sioux Falls. It's located between I-90 and North Sixtieth Street North and just west of North Sycamore Avenue. It's about 102.7 acres in size, and this is going to be the site of the future city emergency training facility.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak on this item tonight? All right, counselors, you got any questions here? Look for a motion.
Move approval.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Nightzert, seconded by Brecky to approve item fifty-eight. Any discussion here? All right. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Next item, fifty-nine, second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 950 and 1,000 South Blaine Avenue, from the C1 Commercial Pedestrian Oriented and RA1 Apartment Residential Low Density Districts, to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar Districts, number 14183, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval seven to zero. Private applicants, AAB Engineering and Surveying, Alan Beecham.
The applicant is Alan Beecham. It's located just north of Fourteenth Street and west of South Cleveland Avenue, just north of the Andy's Food Market. It's about 2.14 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing a new Dollar General store on this lot.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counsel, any questions here?
Move approval. Second, Kylie.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Kylie to approve this item. Any discussion, council? Hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item sixty is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the northeast corner of South Veterans Parkway and East Forty-first Street, from the LW Live Work RA1 Residential Apartments Low Density, RA3 Residential Apartments High Density, RD2 Residential Suburban Town Home Districts, to the CN Conservation RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential, RS Single Family Residential Suburban, C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar, C3 Commercial Community LW Live Work RA1 Residential Apartments Low Density, RA3 Residential Apartments High Density Districts, number 14178, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, KCDS Incorporated, Perry Kolb.
The applicant is Perry Kolb. The owner is the Burns Family Trust. It's located at the northeast corner of East Forty-first Street and South Veterans Parkway. It's just under 100 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're just doing some minor layout changes to the existing Burns subdivision that's already located there.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item tonight? Counselors, you got any questions here on this one? All right. Hearing none. Let's look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Kylie, seconded by Brecky to approve item sixty here. Any discussion amongst the council? All right. Hearing none. Let's vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That item passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Sixty-one is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at 4425 West Sixty-Ninth Street, from the AG Agricultural District to the RS Single Family Residential Suburban District, number 14129, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Earhart Griffin and Associates, Damian Graeble.
The applicant here is Damian Graeble. It's located south of West Sixty-Ninth Street and west of South Beale Avenue, just south of the Avera Behavioral Health Center. It's about 1.1 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing an off-site parking lot for Avera Behavioral Health. This intersection does have a signal, so we'll be able to get pedestrian safely across Sixty-Ninth Street to the hospital.
All right. Thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one? Counselors, questions for Mr. Bieber here?
Move approval. Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve sixty-one. Any discussion on the council here? All right. Hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That item passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Sixty-two is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the southeast corner of East Bison Trail and South Maple Rock Trail, from the O Office District to the RD1 Twin Home Duplex Residential Suburban District, number 140392021, and amending the official zoning map of the Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Joshua Incorporated, Tim Steinberg.
The applicant here is Tim Steinberg. It's located south of East Sixty-Ninth Street and east of South Southeastern Avenue. It's about 1.62 acres in size. The applicant is looking at subdividing this 1.6 acres into three lots and constructing a twin home on each of the lots.
All right. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would wish to speak to this one here? Counselors, you got any questions for Jason? All right. Look for a motion here.
Move to approve. Brecky.
Second, Jensen.
All right. Motion by Brecky and seconded by Jensen to approve sixty-two. Any discussion on that? All right. Hearing none. Let's take a vote.
Councilmember Starr.
Yes.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
Yes.
Selberg.
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item sixty-three.
Item sixty-three is a second reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota rezoning property located at the northwest corner of North Marion Road and West Pine Ridge Drive, from the O Office District to the C2 Commercial Neighborhood and Streetcar District, number 14067, 2021, and amending the official zoning map of the city of Sioux Falls. The Planning Commission recommends approval four to two. Private applicants, Signature Companies LLC, Clint Ackerman.
The applicant here is Clint Ackerman with Signature Companies. It's located at the northwest corner of West Pine Ridge Drive and west North Marion Avenue. It'll be just west of the new Jefferson High School. It's about 1.88 acres in size. The purpose of this rezoning is they're looking at constructing some new retail buildings across from Jefferson High School. I believe at first reading, we had some questions about the location of commercial in this specific area, which is typically, you are correct, that we normally like to locate these on the quarter-mile access points off of arterials. This is actually at the half-mile. But really, when staff analyzed this specific one, it's a little bit different than some of the other ones we've seen, specifically with the high school directly across the street. If you look at the other four high schools in town, typically, those are all located on two arterial streets. This one is just on an arterial and then a collector. So, if staff with analyzing that did feel that commercial would be warranted on this intersection within Sioux Falls, so.
Okay. Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, do you have any questions for Jason on this one? Look for a motion here.
Move approval. Jensen.
Second, Brecky.
All right. Motion by Jensen, seconded by Brecky to approve item sixty-three. Any discussion on that, council?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Nightzert.
I had some constituents contact me regarding this item, and so, you know, at first blush, it looked fairly reasonable. And so, they challenged me to give this a closer look. There are people that live out there, and I will say that a few of the things that they brought up, I think they may be potentially envisioning something worse than maybe what it may be. But they did have some valid points. So, I did go out there. I got out. I walked around. It's been a little while since I've been out there and kind of walked through that neighborhood, and especially with all the changes with the road and everything. And as I was looking at it, first of all, this parcel's awfully close to that residential, which is essentially owned townhomes, condos, whatever you wish to call them, that are owned. Quite a few elderly that live there. I'll be the first to say that this area needs commercial quite a bit. It's been a long time coming, and the school's going to trigger some development, and they could use some services out there. That being said, I struggle with this location, and I'll tell you why. So, as Jason mentioned, they normally would like to see commercial closer to the quarter miles. And I mean, in plain English, what that means is closer to Madison Street or up at Maple Street, closer to those intersections of arterials. You don't generally put them up in the middle like this. Now, the justification is that this one's a little different because the school is there, and I think in their words, they said it was across the street, and I struggle with that a little bit. If you go out there, I don't know that I would say that. I mean, it's across Marion, but I wouldn't necessarily say it's across the street respectfully. Then, it is zoned for office. It could be daycares. It could be another of other things. And then, when I, so, I went out there, and I had some discomfort, and then I pulled, I just went through this. I pulled up all the zoning and kind of just started drawing some pictures to kind of think this out. And so, as I looked at it, Team Street, which is signalized, so I'll start at the north, that has a signal, a full signal and a light. That's Zone C2 on the northwest quadrant. Commercial could go there right now. Drainage is to the south of there, so you can't do anything there. The subject property down there is zoned office. The one over on the other side of the subject property, just to the right of the subject, which says Zoned Live Work, that potentially could get rezoned commercial. That could make even a little bit more sense potentially than right next to the residential. Just below the subject property is Zoned Live Work, and my understanding is it's the same owner, and they're going to be building an apartment complex there, which is going to completely hem in that commercial. The one below the, to the right of that Zoned Live Work is Zoned I-1. I could see that potentially. You could rezone that to commercial, probably. And then, you go to all the way down where it says Zoned I-1. That could potentially get rezoned. And then, you have a C2 south of there already, and then you have a C2 to the right. That's all commercial. And then, over there to the west at Madison and Marion, you have four parcels that are zoned commercial. Two or three are owned by different private entities like gas stations and things for future. The one at the northern of the four, interestingly, is owned by the same applicant, and they are having a hearing, I think tomorrow night, the Planning Commission, to rezone it from commercial down to apartments. So, I mean, there's an opportunity for commercial there. So, I guess this isn't crazy, but I think there's better locations for it, and I do get the neighbors' points, and so, I'm not going to support this one. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, counselor. Is there other discussion on this item? All right. Hearing none. We got a motion, a second. Let's take a vote, then, please.
Councilmember Starr.
No.
Brecky.
Yes.
Erickson.
Yes.
Jensen.
Yes.
Kylie.
Yes.
Nightzert.
No.
Selberg.
Yes.
All right. That item passes five to two. Move on to item sixty-four.
Item sixty-four is a first reading, an ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, amending the code of ordinances of the city by revising Title VII Traffic Code in Chapter 95, Parks and Recreation, to provide for the definition of motorized foot scooter and establishing a new Chapter 125 Motorized Foot Scooters. Recommendations set a date of second reading for Tuesday, June 8, 2021. Sponsors, councilmembers Jensen and Erickson.
Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. We have motorized foot scooters in front of us tonight. The great thing about technology is it's always advancing, and specifically, we had to look at where motorized foot scooters fits within our city ordinances, and it really didn't have a spot. And furthermore, it didn't really have a spot in the state legislature as well. So, this year, the state legislature and the governor passed a motorized foot scooter law that made it permissive for cities to regulate those themselves. So, that's where you see motorized foot scooters, so wheeled conveyance with handlebars designed to be stood on. I think we all kind of understand that. If you have any questions, we can describe it more. Maybe I should have brought one with tonight to talk it through. A little background, was approached by a local entrepreneur, a voter, a constituent, constituent services. That's what we also do here on the council, is listen to the people that vote for us and bring us here. So, motorized foot scooters, then, was passed through the legislature this year, through House Bill 1192, allowing them on city sidewalks unless restricted locally. We discussed this with a few individuals at the state level in the Motorized Safety Division with regards to the streets, and they did not want these on the streets. And I respected their opinion, and we were able to work that through, so it's on sidewalks. We worked with various departments in the city, from our attorney's office that made sure it was legal, Parks and Rec Department, we'll talk about that here in a little later, and then then our Planning and Development Services to kind of look at it and there was a lot of back and forth. It was not an easy process, but we got to what's at us, uh, in front of us today, uh, brought forward by Counselor Erickson and myself. The Park and Rec Department, um, their board, they recommended the piece that impacts them, uh, I, at their May nineteenth meeting in uh, here twenty twenty-one. So as we continue on, um, the motorized scooters for private use, uh, that, that, we promoted consistency with e-bicycles and motorized foot scooters, but what we really focused on, from our position, is commercial um, operators. We wanted to set the framework so that we don't get one of the uh, big shops to come in and just dump a thousand scooters littered all over the town. We don't want that in our downtown Sioux Falls and, and nor should we expect that from this uh, regulation. Um, this ride sharing uh, program is very much similar to the um, lifts and the Ubers of the world. Uh, there, there will be um, a license effective for three years, uh, the fee you can see on the screen uh, behind us. And then the city is authorized to limit the number of scooters and uh, and also the licensees, uh, as we see fit, as we roll this out, because it's really a pilot program to see what we can accomplish and how we can stay innovative like we were uh, the previous weeks with the Breaks Coffee Shop. Now, here's, here's the real critical piece to this being a success, is the device operating area. And if this passes and uh, the mayor and his staff work together with downtown Sioux Falls, with all of the stakeholders from uh, people, the device operating area is going to be the biggest thing that we have to uh, look at. We do not want this in between Ninth and Twelfth Street on Phillips Avenue. There's a lot of doors that swing out into the street, there's a lot of foot traffic there. We don't want to be in that area because it just doesn't work well for the model that um, was, what was brought forward to us, um, as we, as we developed this. It must be equipped with a GPS tracking uh, technology, which first off, if one of these is dumped in the river, as a matter of fact, uh, they are in, in different cities like Austin, the operator will be able to find that in two minutes. Will also have a credit card on file to track down the person who threw this in the river. Uh, it will be a, uh, individuals that live in this community because we're going to require, you know, them to be operating this company on a daily basis whenever they have their motor uh, foot scooters out on the streets. We're also going to comply with the safety standards established by the Consumer Product Safety Commission and all other federal, state, and local safety standards. So um, they're, they're also going to need to have comprehensive general liability and, and where we got this and where it works successfully, and you're going to hear about this, is up in Duluth, up in Duluth, in Minnesota. Minnesota allows these in, on their streets. Uh, we should be so fortunate to have an open policy to allow these on our streets and see what we as a city can unravel i- i- in a really, really uh, productive way and, and a collaborative way with uh, with the businesses that want to open here. Um, these scooters uh, must be picked up every single night, or uh, these companies must partner with private companies to have them bring them in. But it won't be the responsibility of the city to pick these up, nor would it be good business sense for a company just to come dump a thousand scooters here unless that was their model, which we are preventing that model here through providing this good customer safety, uh, citizen safety legislative, uh, legislation. So as we continue on to the next uh, slide, uh, we have uh, opportunity for questions. Um, I welcome uh, the council's questions. Um, maybe one suggestion I'd have, because we might get those answered as we continue on, if we heard from public testimony and then answered questions and discussion at the same time, that may be helpful to move, uh, move along.
All right.
Thank you, Mr.
All right, thank you, Counselor Jensen. All right, we'll, we'll start with uh, public input on this. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Please come forward. Come on up and then you can come next, Troy. Good evening, sir.
Greetings. Greetings ladies and gentlemen. My name is Jason Muller. I am the Vice President of Fab, the Falls Area Bicyclists, as well as part of our own Sioux Falls Bicycle Committee unofficial group, but we meet every month. And uh, Sam Troublecock does a great job of leading us and allowing us to speak into situations. You might say, well, Jason, why would you care about what's going on? Because that's scooters, you guys are bicyclists. But I think we have a lot to offer and to be able to speak into this and we weren't invited into the conversation until just this. We do have some concerns and I want to be clear about them. I don't think we can possibly address them all because I, I come out of the business world and I'm sure everybody know what's, knows what scope creep is. We can have great intentions of things that are going to work well. And with all good intentions, but things will get outside the boundaries and it'll start to creep into other things. I'd even cite the example of the e-bikes and I was definitely a proponent for them. My wife rides a Class One e-bike, um, you know, she's not a young woman. And the e-bike assists her to getting around the bike trail so that we can do it at a pretty equal pace and enjoy ourselves. What's great about the e-bike is the requirement that was put in place that it has to have a pedal. So guess how many times when I'm riding around the bicycle trail, about once a day, I see electric devices on that bicycle trail. And I, I can assure you that there are people that said, well, I paid for this device, whether I rented it or purchased it, I'm going to use it the way I see fit. And I don't think it's fair to ask our law enforcement to try to monitor such a petty thing as far as keeping people under twenty miles an hour. I mean, currently we have e-bikes that are Class Two that are riding at, at least twenty, twenty-five miles an hour and I'm just praying that one day we're not going to have an accident where a child gets wounded. I see the same situation going on. We're going to allow these scooters to be used and even if they're not going to be downtown, which I think that you've thought this out quite, quite well, Mr. Jensen, uh, but people are going to ride them downtown and they're going to ride them on the streets downtown because currently I see skateboards every day, I see uh, uniwheel bikes, I see electric bikes. And the reason I hear the most often about why they're riding on the sidewalk is because they don't feel safe in the streets. Now, Fab, as an organization, we're constantly encouraging people to ride their bicycles similar to a vehicle. But I'm really concerned that this reading has come up, it's pretty quick, and I don't know if we could possibly answer all the, the questions that can come out of this in such a short time. I mean, I am not in favor of us having scooters downtown per se. I think they could be on the streets, but I've already heard that streets is not where we're going to have these scooters at and where should they be? The reality is, we're not going to monitor each and every individual. So thanks for your time. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Jason. Thank you. Come on up, sir.
Good evening.
Good evening.
City council members. My name is Troy Holt, I'm here tonight with my family, my wife Sarah, my daughter Courtney, my two sons Carson and Connor. We've lived in Sioux Falls for twenty-four years. Uh, we visited Duluth, Minnesota last summer, uh, saw electric scooters being ridden around and once we were able to finally reserve them, just had an absolute blast. We were able to see many more sights than we would be able to see while we were on foot and it was a great way to experience the city. Uh, we've actually spent the last ten months researching the industry, talking to the, to the owners of Duluth, which the company is called Leaf Rides. Uh, they've agreed to expand their business to Sioux Falls and we'll be the local owners of that business. I reached out to Counselor Jensen last fall to discuss how to do this right in partnership with the city of Sioux Falls. with scooters comes some concerns and we wanted to make sure we got those addressed the right way. I've talked with many different people about the scooters and most are very excited once we give them an overview of the business and how we plan to manage them. And Alex did a great job giving us, giving you guys an overview. Two of the largest areas are around safety and them being a nuisance. Safety is our number one priority. We will educate riders as they download the app to ensure they know the proper way to ride them, including ensuring that all pedestrians have the right of way. We will also be available in parking zones to help them get, uh, going on their first ride and to answer any questions that they have to ensure the um, riders are using the scooters as expected. We will also work with retailers and hotels to offer helmets to riders for free and those helmets will also be identified on the app. If a scooter is out, someone from the team will be downtown to help manage them and to ensure they are not a nuisance and stay in the designated parking zones. The scooters will be taken off the streets every night at nine PM and put back out in the morning. We definitely want to avoid any late night concerns and bar crowds. The scooters are GPS enabled, which allows them to manage speed and boundaries by geofencing. We can control where they go and how fast that they go. There is already mixed-use traffic on the bike trails, sidewalks, and streets, like bicycles, e-bikes, walkers, dog walkers, et cetera. And scooter traffic is no different. We're not here to compete, we just want to be, enjoy the sidewalks as well. We'll be partnering with the city to identify the initial operating area that the scooters are allowed and this will help us control the area that the e-scooters can travel, including those specific blocks on Phillips Avenue. We believe offering scooters will give Sioux Falls residents and those visiting from out of town a way to see much more of the downtown as well as Falls Park and more that they can do on foot. I know a lot of people want to see more of the sculptures. This is a great way to get outside of downtown and to be able to see them. We believe the ordinance puts in place the proper management of them and enjoys a safe and enjoyable experience for all.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you.
May I have some questions for you? We'll get through public input here in a minute, so you can have a seat. Anyone else have uh, public input for this item tonight? All right, not seeing any more public input, then um, what we'll maybe do is, let's get a motion on the floor and then if we have questions for uh, Mr. Holt, we can pull him up, is that all right?
Yep, I'd make a motion to set a date of second reading for Tuesday, uh, June eighth, twenty twenty-one.
Second Erickson.
All right, motion by Jensen and seconded by Counselor Erickson uh, on that. Moving to discussion on the council, Counselor Knight, sir, go ahead.
I do have some questions, which I think would be beneficial for the public. One quick, quick thing off, off the, right off the bat, I guess just to clarify and um, Jason made reference to it, um, we do allow e-bikes but Class One, which are pedal assisted. We don't allow the other classes, which are essentially you just turn a throttle. So there's a distinction, I guess I would make, between an e-bike and something that you completely throttle uh, by itself. Uh, anyway, so I guess, so the first question is, this, this would allow them downtown and, and in certain areas downtown, but not outside of downtown, is that correct?
Correct. The commercial, Mr. Mayor, thank you. The commercial operated companies would be only allowed to be in downtown Sioux Falls in the designated uh, area, uh, that are, the administration would, um, would work on.
Go ahead. Who determines uh, the area that would be appropriate to be used and, and who can change it, where the scooters can travel?
Yep, so the people that could change it would be the administration and they would work in conjunction with our uh, business owners in downtown Sioux Falls, the people that live and work and play in downtown Sioux Falls, which I uh, work in downtown Sioux Falls and potentially use this to uh, drive down to city center if it was ever, uh, if we pass this through. But um, let's say for an example, there was a uh, parklet that came uh, to the city council and that uh, was uh, approved. We probably wouldn't want this in between a parklet and a place of business, so we prob, we'd just look at it and use our common sense, our South Dakota common sense to say, hey, that's probably not a good idea. Also, the business owner would probably say, hey, I've gotten a lot of feedback from uh, this being a really bad idea in between, let's just take for an example outside the Jones, uh, for, you know, the Jones Building. And uh, then, then that owner would make that recommendation to the city administration and that would be a part of that uh, process. It would be a collaborative uh, uh, piece.
Thank you, may I continue?
Counselor Knight, sir, you go ahead.
Well, okay, so if we do authorize a company, how, how long would they be authorized before we could potentially terminate if it wasn't working out?
Well, if it wasn't working out, I'd be the first one to come before this council and the body and say, hey, we need to, you know, re-regulate this, it's not working out as we should do as city councils. We should look for regulations that aren't working out at that time and, and, and regulate or deregulate at that, at position. So if it's not working out and, you know, we'd work with the uh, in the, the city attorney's office for this, but uh, we could restrict and revoke a license, um, as you see in one twenty-five point zero one two.
Okay, um, and if I may just make a comment and then I'll defer?
Go ahead.
Uh, so I, I'll just say right off the bat, I, I like scooters, I've used them in other cities, I've really enjoyed them, um, including I've been in Duluth. Um, so, but I, I am going to struggle with this one, I'm going to probably waver on this one potentially until the end because I see some good benefits. I've talked to Troy Holt, who's the proposed owner and I, I think they have a, a good plan that could help to minimize some of the concerns. That being said, I'm hearing some concerns from the downtown businesses and stakeholders and uh, i- in other areas, they have been prohibited on sidewalks, uh, for safety reasons largely. And there's some areas that tried it on sidewalks and they, and they banned it. I, I honestly wish that state law would allow us to allow them to be used uh, on the streets in certain areas. I'd rather see them on the streets, I understand we can't do that, so this is really maybe our, our only, our only choice. Uh, another comment I would make is that this may be minor, but being also attending the bicycle committee meetings, I, I don't think the spirit of the, of those uh, bike racks being placed was ever to have the scooter parking, so I would intend to probably amend that out and it sounds like the owner would have no issue with not allowing them to be docked in, in, in our city's bike racks, a few of which I think have been donated by Falls Area Bicyclists and, um, so it, it may come down to the operational issues, but I really want to hear from the public over the next week because I, there's definite pros and cons here. It's a neat idea, but there's definitely potentially some concerns, so look forward to discussion.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Other discussion? Other discussion?
Thank you, Mayor.
Counselors, go ahead. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. So, I, I appreciate the conversation that's taking place with those from Troy being there as well as the public and my fellow counselors. You know, when Alex asked me to be involved in this, I, I kind of laughed and I said, good luck, because I think you're gonna have a strong critic here and you probably don't want me to partner with you. And so, we had kind of a good chuckle on that. And truly strategically on his part was really because I was so critical, you know, I challenged him. I, I forced him essentially in, in our conversations to look at it differently. What can we change? What can we do? And really walk through that process. And so, you know, while I had a good laugh and said, you know, you, you probably don't want me involved, truly based on those conversations and those meetings, you know, I really softened to the approach. I travel quite a bit and use these in other cities all over. This is again, not something that's new technology in South Dakota. It's just generally, we like to be last at most stuff, unfortunately. And so, there, there's been a lot of thought put into this. There's been a lot of thought put into the ordinance as far as violations and suspensions and revocations, because my big, big concern was that litter. You know, you go, I, I just was in Kansas City a couple of weeks ago and these things are cluttered everywhere and just looks horrible. And that was a huge concern that I had as well. I, I went to a conference in San Antonio and they said, you know, they got them flipped over the, the bridges into the canal from time to time. And so, we talked through how we're going to avoid that from happening. And truly through all of this process, there was not an I or left undotted or a T left uncrossed. And I was probably the biggest critic of that. I, I appreciate the investment Troy's willing to make in bringing a new service to downtown. I know it can be scary for some, but I welcome anyone with questions to reach out. If we don't have the answer, we'll certainly get it for you and, and make sure that you've got the information that you need. But again, this is not new technology. It just, you know, we, we like to not always be leading the way when it's some of these things. And so, I will support this and will, you know, admit that I was the biggest critic from the beginning. And, and like I said, I've softened my approach and, and appreciate the fact that there's been a lot of research and dialogue into this.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kylie and then Counselor Brecky.
Thank you. I have a number of questions, not in any order, just kind of how I listed. So, number one, Counselor Neitz touched on it a little bit. You had mentioned the area north or, or south of 9th Street and, and between 9th and 14th Street, Phillips Avenue would be restricted?
Right. Yep. I, I addressed that. In between 9th and 11th, I mean, it might be 12th, it might be 8th to 11th. That's going to be something that we have to define. If I can just answer these as he addressed it.
That's fine. You guys can just dialogue.
Okay, that's, yeah, that's.
If it gets ugly, I'll step in, okay?
Very good. I didn't bring any boxing gloves. That's not my intention. The, so as, as the areas that might initially be designated as all right to operate, as they develop further and become more and more congested, are you willing to constrict that area and reduce their operational site, site or, or area?
I think the city should do that to be good stewards to the walkability of downtown Sioux Falls. And I think that the, the company would welcome that because they don't want to be where you can just easily walk from store to store. They want to be the bridge from the old downtown, which we know, you know, by Minerva's and, you know, in that 9th, the 10th area, the bridge down to the Levitt, the Jacobson's Plaza that's going on. And then on the east side of the bike trails, you know, if we can get more people down to see our Falls, if we can get them that are down there up to our, you know, new downtown and even up to the old downtown, what a way to promote economic development and do it in a safe way. So, as those areas develop, absolutely, we need to be willing to be, you know, to restrict those if needed.
And, and I appreciate that willingness. As an operator, though, I would be somewhat concerned over the ability to restrict my area once I've made an initial investment and now I'm restricted in how far I can actually branch out. I would have concerns over that. You'd, you'd mentioned you would abide by industry safety standards. Could you elaborate a little bit more on what those safety standards are, please?
Yeah, we'd have to work with, you know, everyone as a part of it, but we'd want people to wear helmets. That's not going to always be the case. But we will provide the, well, not we, but the operators as a part of signing on to their scooter would have to look at the safety and requirements that the city of Sioux Falls and, and all of the, you know, different safety people. If you have any advice in that, we could put that on the screen.
So, so in terms of helmets, it hasn't been specified whether it's a bicycling helmet, a motorcycling helmet approved by the Department of Transportation or it hasn't gone that far yet?
Correct.
You had also mentioned a $1 million aggregate insurance policy, but I believe it also said per occurrence. I was a little confused. Is it 1 million per occurrence with a 2 million aggregate or just what? Or could one, one occurrence be up to a million dollars and then you've met your aggregate?
Like we said, we, we tracked this off a Duluth, Duluth's regulation. And if Mr. Holt would like to speak on it, he surely can, but they have never ran into a, a problem where the insurance was, was an issue as it is in their ordinance and we mirrored theirs.
I, I think the idea of having insurance and especially naming the city of Sioux Falls as an additional insured is, is wise. I, I, it was just a question whether or not it was a million per occurrence or if that was your aggregate, which is gonna, if you had 10 accidents and it, once it reached a million dollars, your insurance ran out. I was unclear on that.
We'll clear that up for you.
Thank you. What about individuals that own private scooters? What's to prevent them from bringing them down and they don't have the geofencing and the GPS equipped? How would you, number one, discern a private scooter from one that is going to be used in this operation? And what would prevent somebody from just coming down with their private scooter?
Good question. Nothing would prevent them from coming down and using their private scooter in downtown Sioux Falls. So, that is not what we're regulating here. What we're regulating is the commercial operators.
Okay. And I'm almost, unless you want to go to Counselor Brecky and come back?
Go ahead.
What about, of course, we know that downtown, especially in the evening, alcohol served. What about alcohol and use of the scooters? How do you prevent somebody who's? And, and we also know that impairment can occur with one drink. So, how do we prevent alcohol use while using a scooter or not to mention other drugs that could impair an operator's ability to control and operate the scooter?
Well, there will be warnings on it, but I'll ask you the question. How do we prevent people from driving intoxicated or, or any of those other things? So, it would be not legal under this ordinance to be drunk driving or be impaired on these scooters. But if I have had the silver bullet that I could stop drunk driving, but that it, it doesn't exist?
I would counter with that, that it's bad enough on the street, but potentially added to the sidewalks, it's, would multiply that somewhat. 15 miles per hour. I, I do, I, I've spent 40 some years in, in traffic safety. A lot of that is in motorcycle safety. And I know that a motorcycle that's equipped with integrated ABS systems at 15 miles per hour is going to take at a, a minimum generally 15 feet in order to stop. So, if a door opens up or somebody steps out of a, of a shop or something, I do have concerns about that 15 miles per hour maximum. And so, it's, we've, we've had some of these discussions before, so my questions shouldn't come as a surprise to you, but I, I really do, because of the safety factors involved in this, it would, this is going to be a hard one for me, for me to support, but I appreciate the research that you've put into it and I appreciate you answering my questions. And if you could get back to me on some of those others, that'd be great, too.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Brecky.
Just kind of piggybacking off some of the questions that have already been asked. The, the where they can be and where they can't be, how are they going to be informed of that? You've said that we've tasked out the administration to work with the business community to basically determine a map or a district. Are we then going to pass something that, you know, you know, will we be required to create a district to be where they can be? And then how are the individuals, when they rent them, going to be educated so that they know where they can be and they can't be?
Yep. So, that all happens within the technology of the scooter, the geofencing technology. Each scooter would have a chip that basically will be basically locked down when it hits a place that it cannot be. So, in between, you know, 9th and 10th on Phillips, it can't be there. So, it will kind of go to a stop right before that. And, and that's the technology that we talked about in the, you know, the area that is allowable. And with the administration putting that area together, they will then give that to the operators and they will program, program that into their, into their technology. So, and if they needed to change it right away, they could change it in a moment's notice, you know, with the technology that they have. And it's, it's a widely used technology. For an example, on Prairie Green Golf Course, when you get close to the green, it stops your golf cart, so you can't drive on the green, right? The same would be true where if you're going to be trying to go down Phillips, you know, in between 9th and 10th to where some of the other people's concerns where, you know, someone might get hit walking out of a, a, a store, it stops you. It doesn't allow you, so you have to walk it through that, that alley or that, that lane. So, it's a great question.
So, you're, okay, that, that was very helpful because I was trying to understand how both sides would know, how whether people who wanted to complain about it would know that somebody was where they were supposed to be, not where they were supposed to be or, you know, whether the, the rider themselves would know. So, that's very helpful that it could be done that way. The other question is, so the intent is though, to just really have it in the downtown area and the downtown area would kind of be defined by this, you know, the administration?
Correct.
And then I guess the next questions I have are about, you know, you talked about what's to prevent other operators from coming in? I mean, I, I don't think we can offer an exclusive licensure to any individual group or organization. You said this would prevent someone from, you know, dropping a thousand. Is that just because there wouldn't be the demand for it, you're thinking? Or, you know, what is to stop one of those bigger companies to come in and take advantage and, and compete?
Yeah, I would never recommend doing an exclusive contract with someone.
I don't think you can.
That'd be, exactly. So, yeah, that never was, you know, talked about from me. Secondly, if you talk about the big operators that just come in and leave their technology, there's, I, I would be surprised if they could comply with the regulations that we put forth and comply with staying up to date with our device area that will be outlined by the administration. So, I don't think that they would want to come into an, an environment like that where it's regulated, where they can't just have free access, where they can't go on the streets, where we can't restrict them on the streets via the geofencing and such. So, I just don't think that they would want to come here. That's why we're working with a local entrepreneur who came to us and said, hey, if I was going to bring this here, how could you see it happening? And I said, well, it's going to take a, a lot of thought, of which we've, you know, started last fall. And then we had to go to the state legislature. We worked with individuals that are part of the Sioux Falls, you know, committee in, in starting conversations. And we would have thought that they would have been invited to the table through these conversations. And, and I'm going to invite them to the conversation this week and work through some of the questions that they have because I think they are manageable. I think they are attainable if we work for them. So, I, I just don't think that a big company that has a thousand scooters wants to invest those into the Sioux Falls area because the regulation that's in front of you wouldn't be one, if I was a business owner, that I'd want to bring them to. I think you need to be a local operator and have, you know, boots on the ground. You have to have a, a cellphone that you can call that has a 605 area code that if there's a scooter left outside of Parkers, it is retrieved within the hour and, and, and all of those things. So, that's what I'm specifically talking about.
So, what you're saying is there's nothing to prohibit them, but you, you created a very narrowly tailored and restricted, restricted model that's probably not going to be something they may be interested in. But if they were able to comply with it, then they could if they wanted to.
They could absolutely apply for a license if they wanted to comply with it, no doubt.
Okay, that, that answers my question. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Selberg, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, it's certainly an exciting idea. It's a fun idea. It's progressive. It's a big city feel, like the one picture was down in Kansas City. And we're all kind of working towards our, you know, we are getting to be a bigger city. So, it's intriguing. I do think there are some concerns and a couple of my questions were already asked, but I, I think I will be voting it through tonight, but I think there is some good conversation to be had here in the next week and some of these concerns to have some answers ready to go. And you, you are well prepared and have some answers, but I think there's a few hanging out there. So, we'll have a good talk about it here in the next week, but appreciate the effort you put in and bringing it forward.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Other discussion here? Counselor Neitz?
A couple of final points. I, I do want to hear from everybody, but particularly downtown stakeholders and any groups that represent downtown. That would be, I think this is a perfect opportunity for them to take a position. The other thing would be, this is just for others' knowledge, I guess. I, I'm going to be discussing with the attorneys, the language, because I, I just want to have a comfort level that we do have the, the way it's written, that we will have the control that I, I guess is being asserted. And that, and that would mean, for example, that we can define the area and that we could potentially tell them, you need to change the area and they would have to change it within a reasonable time period or that we could limit the number of, of scooters, that there's things that we could do and adjust on the fly beyond which I, I mean, I trust that, you know, it's a good local operator. That's not an issue. But this is something where we do need to have some control over it and I would still like, I, I understand that you, you got to make an investment, you want it for a certain period, but I, I do have a little bit of consternation about potentially a three-year, that you might get it for three years and then maybe we can't shut it down if it doesn't go well after the first, the first season. Again, I, I will say that, you know, that these things could be worked through potentially, so I'm, I'm going to leave the door open, but there are reasons in other cities why they have prohibited them on sidewalks. So, we, we do have to think about that seriously. So, thanks.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Kylie, go ahead.
One additional question that I failed to ask. With the geofencing, is it, is it possible when we have our controlled intersections, intersections with red lights, stop signs and things that it can be geofenced in such a way where the scooter does shut down, so it can't just blow through the red light or blow through the stop sign? Unfortunately, we have enough of that going on. Unfortunately, unless people are operating automobiles, they often think traffic laws do not apply to them. We have enough bicyclists going through stop signs and red lights. No offense to the Fab, it's probably not sure, it's probably not your members, however. And we have unfortunately automobiles that do the same thing as we know on the past week with the tragedy that's occurred, but.
Mr. Mayor, may I answer the question?
Go ahead, Counselor.
Thank you for highlighting all of the things that could potentially be wrong before addressing that question. Allow me to, yes, the geofence will and can be used to stop and slow people. If, it, it won't sense the red light, but it can slow the people before they either have to walk it across or follow the law, just like any one of us that'd be walking on the street or riding an e-bike on the street or riding a bicycle on the street, or excuse me, sidewalk.
Sure.
So, yes, it can be geofenced.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Any other final discussion here on this one? All right, let's take it to a vote then.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right. That item passes seven to zero. We'll move on to our next item, please.
Item 65 is a resolution, or excuse me, item 65 is a first reading and ordinance of the city of ordinance of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, approving the naming of a facility space on public property, Innovative Han Lounge to the third floor suite level at the Denny Sanford Premier Center. Recommendation set a date a second reading for Tuesday, June fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hi, Diane.
Hi, good evening. Diane Decoyer, representing Planning and Development Services. The applicant for this is Mike Crusom and Rick Huffman with the Denny Sanford Premier Center. The location for the Innovative slash Han Lounge will replace McNally's VIP Lounge on the third floor of the suite level. Signage will be located, as it's shown on the screen, two panels of the glass stair rail at the circular bar inside the lounge, both entrances of the lounge hung at the ceiling, and directional signage at the southeast elevator on the suite level with matching brushed aluminum lettering as it exists throughout the facility, and also at the wall at the suite level of the south entrance. This item was approved by the naming committee on May seventh. It was a five to zero vote on it. And I can answer any questions you have.
All right, thanks, Diane. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? All right, Counselors, do you have any questions for Diane or the applicant who's here? Go ahead, Counselor Nitzer.
Two questions. First, I know what Innovative is, you can go get like your printing and shirts and stuff like that at Han, is that, are they merged now or what's, I should know this, but...
I believe they have. Mike Crusom is here to possibly answer that. I think Han is also a furniture brand.
And he may also be able to answer my other question, which was, is the revenue of this or the naming rights the same, more, less than what it's replacing, if it's apples to apples?
Good evening, Mike.
Mike Crusom, General Manager, ASM Global, Denny Sanford Premier Center. Yes, Counselor, the revenue for this proposed naming is greater than what the McNally sponsorship was, which did expire two years ago.
Okay. And then Han is a...
Han is an office furniture supply like Diane, so they are using that as a showcase. They're going to change out, they have the option to change out some of their furniture showcasing at different times of the year.
Okay, perfect.
Keep it fresh.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Any other questions tonight? All right, look for a motion to set a date a second reading for Tuesday, June fifteen.
So moved. Nitzer?
Second.
Kylie?
All right, motion by Nitzer, seconded by Kylie. Any discussion here?
All right, let's take a vote on that, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item sixty-six.
Item sixty-six is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Burnsfield Edition, one four one seven nine, two thousand and twenty-one. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, K C D S Incorporated, Perry Cold.
This is the preliminary subdivision plan that goes along with the rezoning we heard earlier in the night for the property, just under a hundred acres, located at the northeast corner of Veterans Parkway and East Forty-first Street. They're just amending their previous preliminary plan, just with the updates to the zoning that we did earlier tonight, so.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Counselors, you got any questions here?
Move to approve. Kylie?
Second.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Selberg on this. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item sixty-seven is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Harrisburg Schools Third Edition, one forty-one sixty-five, two thousand and twenty-one. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Sayore Associates, Paul Corn.
Similar to the rezoning, the applicant is requesting to defer this one also to the June fifteenth meeting.
All right, thanks, Jason. Any public input on this item here? All right, Counselors, look for a motion to defer this to June fifteenth meeting.
So moved. Jensen.
Second. Nitzer?
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Nitzer for that deferral. Any discussion on it? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Sixty-eight is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Foundation Park North Edition, one forty-one fifty-three, two thousand and twenty-one. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Sayore Associates, Paul Corn.
The applicant here is Paul Corn with Sayore Associates. This is the preliminary subdivision plan that went along with rezoning we had earlier in the night. This is for Sioux Falls, the Foundation Park North Edition. It's about four hundred and forty acres, and as indicated before, they're looking at subdividing for future heavy industrial uses.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counselors, you got any questions tonight for Jason here?
Move approval? Second. Kylie?
All right, motion by Selberg, got a second by Counsel Kylie here. Any discussion on that? Then let's take a vote.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item?
Next item is sixty-nine, a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Harrisburg Schools Fourth Edition, one four one four seven, two thousand and twenty-one. Planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Sayore Associates, Karen Lang.
The applicant here is Sayore Associates. It's located at the southwest corner of Sixty-ninth and South Southeastern Avenue. This is about thirty-three acres in size, and this is the preliminary plan for the Harrisburg Middle School.
All right, thank you, Jason. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item here? Counselors, any questions for Jason on this one? Look for a motion to approve, please.
So moved. Jensen. Kylie?
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Kylie to approve sixty-nine. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item seventy?
Item seventy is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Pitts Edition, one forty-one forty-three, two thousand and twenty-one. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, JSA Consulting Engineering Land Surveyors Incorporated, Patrick Schwabach.
The applicant here is Pat Schwabach with JSA. This one is located at the southeast corner of North Marion and Interstate Ninety. It's about twelve point two six acres in size. The future, or the purpose of this preliminary plan is to subdivide that twelve acres into five lots for future light industrial uses.
All right, thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public wish to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you got any questions here?
Move approval? Second. Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen on that. Any discussion here? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item seventy-one, please.
Item seventy-one is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls approving the preliminary plan of Western Diamond Edition, one forty-one twenty-eight, two thousand and twenty-one. The planning commission recommends approval four to zero. Private applicants, Earhart Griffin and Associates, Damian Graeble.
The applicant here is Damian Graeble. It's located just south of the Avera Behavioral Health Hospital on Sixty-ninth Street. It's about one point one eight acres, and this is the preliminary plan for their proposed accessory offsite parking lot.
Thanks, Jason. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, you got any questions here for Jason? All right, look for a motion.
Move approval. Jensen. Second. Kylie?
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counsel Kylie on this. Any discussion on that motion? All right, well, vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Nitzer?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item?
Item seventy-two is a resolution authorizing an application for financial assistance, authorizing the execution and submittal of the application, and designating an authorized representative to certify and sign payment requests. Sponsor is the mayor.
Good evening, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Mark Cotter with the Office of Public Works, and I have with me Ryan Johnson. He's our principal wastewater engineer that we'll get into a little bit granular here in a few slides. This item tonight simply allows the city to make application for funding through the state of South Dakota, through their state revolving fund program. This project is an outcome of the two thousand and eighteen final master plan for the wastewater system, and tonight you'll hear about a really important wastewater investment so we can continue to provide reliable wastewater service, but also continue the growth of the city of Sioux Falls. If you recall, the master plan really broke into two significant investments that we need to invest in the treatment plant, to expand it by, from twenty million gallons a day up to thirty. That was an investment of a hundred and sixty million. And then on the collection system, which is essentially how your wastewater leaves your house and/or your business, travels through a series of pipes and lift stations and sometimes more than one lift station, that bucket was to invest about a hundred million dollars into the collection system. Tonight's project is in that bucket. It's a significant upgrade to an existing lift station. If you drove on Fifty-seventh Street straight east until you hit the river, there's a, one of the four largest wastewater lift stations that serves the city of Sioux Falls is in that location. That's what you'll hear tonight. We want you to know too, after that master plan came forward with the treatment plan investment and the collection system, we've brought before this council to establish rates, user rates have been established and are in place to support this project from two thousand and nineteen through two thousand and twenty-three. So, are we ready?
I think we're going to use, we're going to use the overhead, I think, Mark.
Okay.
Or kick it old school here.
We've just got a few slides. That'll certainly work fine, and Ryan will step you through it. Ryan Johnson.
Make you earn it tonight, Ryan. See if you can get through there.
Well, good evening, Ryan Johnson, City Sioux Falls Engineer. Apologize for the delay. We had the path and it's not working for us.
No problem.
So we're going to try to do what we can. Mark mentioned, give a brief presentation on the pump station two forty project. This is what we call it, our Phase Two project. It's a forest main project. Do a quick presentation on that. And again, ask support for this funding application and SRF package that will help provide dollars to construct this project. Project location, it's showing up there on the map. The starting point of this project is what we call our pump station two forty. This pump station serves the land generally to the east of Veterans Parkway, south of Fifty-seventh, and just real generally east of Sycamore Avenue. It eventually served the area all the way over to the Big Sioux River and then south to where Harrisburg and Sioux Falls eventually come together. So it represents a really large volume of land that will be in our city limits at some point in the future. The alignment of that forest main starts at that pump station two forty. We'll go, yeah, we'll go back for a moment, and then goes inside the Fifty-seventh Street right away, then goes north on Veterans Parkway up towards Rice Street, where it eventually crosses the Big Sioux River to go to our water reclamation facility for final treatment. Small portion of that project, we are also doing a water main install from Sixth Street down to Twenty-sixth Street, showing up there in blue. Very similar consultants, very similar contractor, very similar CA, so we were going to try to take advantage of those similarities and then pay for that work with non-participating funds from our water user fees. So that is a part of this project. So a little bit about our existing conditions. That forest main and that pump station is currently served by a sixteen inch pipe. The gravity sewer goes to that pump station, is pressurized and pushed to our water reclamation facility. Capacity is about three point six million gallons. We're going to more than double that and get that up to about seven million gallons when the project is completed. Little unique where it pumps up over a hill that's got an elevation difference of about two hundred feet, so it's a little unique for areas in the upper Midwest. So it's a unique project just in that standpoint alone. Lot of foresight with the initial designers that built this facility. They've left space for three additional pumps that we'll put in there, and that'll be a part of a project that we call our Phase One. And along with that Phase One work, we'll put in an equalization basin, and that's already bid, and we'll begin construction soon. Again, design and foresight, the builders put in connection points, so it's really easy transition for us to extend that forest main at some point or when we bid this project. Little bit about our recommended alternatives. Ten miles of thirty-inch forest main in that alignment I mentioned earlier, certainly had several iterations of routes that we looked at before settling in on this. Certainly an advantage with the environmental components maintaining in the existing right away and very few easement acquisitions. Certainly impacts at some truck crossings and then bike paths along that route too as we go along. We'll go to the next slide. Total project cost, it's lined out there in front of you with construction, administration, and contingency. The project cost is forty-one point six million dollars. Thirty-five point five million dollars is what this loan application will be for. Any potential dollar amount over that, just to make sure we're covered, is being made up with user fees that we're setting aside. So we matched our current estimate of forty-one point six million dollars. Made comment that the water main portion will be funded separately by water user fees, and they estimate that total project cost at four point eight million dollars. Again, a couple comments on the proposed financing. SRF loan of thirty-five point five million dollars, interest rate two percent for twenty years. Water main will finance their portion separately. This project has been in concept and preliminary design or iterations for many years. We began design in earnest earlier this year, assuming support tonight for this loan package. Our goal is to bid the project early next year and complete the project in the first part of two thousand and twenty-four. So with that, would certainly be happy to answer any questions you may have and ask for your support.
Thanks, Ryan. Mark, I give you about a six out of ten running the overhead there, so not bad. Any, anyone from the public who would like to speak on this tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Ryan? Counselor Nitzer, go ahead.
I think I have one specific to the project and then just kind of a couple general wastewater, if you don't mind.
Sure.
So the first is, you mentioned an EQ basin. Are they gonna, are you gonna be constructing a new?
Yes.
EQ basin in the area?
Yes. So we'll pull up a slide that kind of gives an overhead view looking from east to west. So that's our, that's our pump station 240 site. 57th Street is just there, so that runs basically east and west. And our new equalization site will be up on the top of that hill that Mark will kind of give a circle up in that area. Maybe a little bit more. 10 million gallons only be used during significant flow events, and that'll provide a wide spot in the road, if you will, to fill that, and then slowly go back into the equalization or the pump station, back to water rack.
As I recall, it's like a big tank underground, and essentially during high flows, it can hold back some of the water so you can regulate how much goes to the plant.
Right. Yeah, so very, very similar. This one will be earthen. It'll have some, some gates and plumbing that could fill quickly, but then the design will be for it to drain very slowly back into the system.
Okay. And then you made mention of going, having to get through the Big Sioux River. Is there a pipe that actually goes under the river or through the river, or?
And we have this, we've had crossings like this in many locations, and what we'll do is, depending on rock and a lot of different factors, we'll say we'll put it in a casing pipe. In some places, we'll put it in a location where it can divert around it and then encase the entire thing in concrete. And so still being considered what the best alternative is for this, but we will cross that river with the force main. We've done it many times with gravity sewers and other different applications.
I'm sure you have. I'm just thinking of like environmental considerations in terms of leaks or anything, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
My two general questions. How is the Rice Street Lift Station construction progressing?
So the fourth quarter this year is the target completion date. So it's on, on, there was delay with the flooding events. I believe it was September of 19. You know, the site was inundated. That set the project back a few months, but after that, it's been great weather. But had a great experience with this contractor and great design team and project management throughout. So it's been, it's been a good experience, a good project.
Okay. And finally, I don't know if you're the, if you're the one to answer this, or Director Cotter is. The, the art plan has some, I don't know the details, but there may be some opportunity for water or wastewater funding. Has that been analyzed? Do we have any idea whether we could capture any of that?
And that's certainly our hope because water and wastewater was wrote into the legislation. I know Sean Pritchard's been watching it very closely. We think just this process and this action tonight just simply allows us to make application for funding, and then ultimately toward the end of the year would be when we bring bond counsel with us and actually simulate the loan. If there's any either grants or principal forgiveness, we're hopeful that this project would be a perfect fit for it. So, but yes, tonight, that's, we understand that it's at least allowed in the legislation.
That's where I was going, just so we're looking at the opportunity. Thanks.
Yep.
Other questions for Mark or Ryan? All right, look for a motion on this item then.
Move to approve, Breckie.
Second, Selberg.
All right, motion by Breckie, seconded by Selberg to approve 72. Any discussion on that motion? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Erickson?
Erickson votes yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Item 73 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, authorizing the mayor to sign an agreement with Heartland Consumers Power District to establish mutual obligations under sections 201 and 210 of the Public Utility Regulatory Policies Acts, PURPA, and Part 292 of the Code of Federal Regulations for the Purchase and Sale of Energy from Qualifying Facilities. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hey, Jerry.
Hello, Counselors, Mayor. Jerry Johnning, Traffic Light and Power Superintendent. We've got two resolutions here to go, 73 and 74. They're kind of related to each other. 73 is a slight amendment to the contract we have with the Heartland Power. Heartland Power provides our supplemental power for the city of Sioux Falls, and there is a chapter 29 in it that asks if we receive any renewable generation into the city, that we amend the contract to allow that. So we're actually partnered with Heartland as a conduit through the city of Sioux Falls to allow us to accept renewable generation into our power grid.
All right. Thank you, Jerry.
Yep, simple.
Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? Counselors, you got any questions for Jerry tonight here? Counselor Knights, or go ahead.
When you say accept renewable, you mean if somebody has excess power they've generated privately with like solar panels, that would, you can accept it back into your system?
Correct. Yep. We do have one customer that would like to put solar panels on top of a new apartment building, and this is part of that, and along with the next resolution to, to allow that into our grid.
All right. Thank you, Counselor. Other questions for Jerry here? Move approval?
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Jensen to approve this item. Any discussion on it? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item.
Item 74 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, adopting an interconnection process and requirements for qualifying facilities to implement cogeneration of electricity and small power production facilities under sections 201 and 210 of the Public Utility Regulatory Policies Acts, PURPA, and Part 292 of the Code of Federal Regulations. Sponsor is the mayor.
Hello, again, Jerry, Traffic Light and Power. So this is the second part of this. This will be our contract basically with the private company to, to allow that renewable generation into our grid. So there's, there'll be some engineering design standards. They have to design a certain way to, safety for our, our alignment and our far grid, and to allow it to work in parallel with, with our system. If there's an outage, we don't want them to be generating solar power, and then we don't have power, and that comes back in our grid. So it's all just the, the engineering design specifications and the legal contract to allow that to happen.
All right, thanks, Jerry. Anyone from the public here to speak on this one tonight? Counselors, any questions for Jerry on this item?
Move approval, Jensen.
Second, Kylie.
All right, motion by Jensen, seconded by Counsel Kylie to approve item 74. Any discussion on that? All right, we'll take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Next item, please.
Next item is 75, a resolution designating the official newspaper for the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Sponsor is Councilmember Sale and Knightsert.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. This resolution designates our official newspaper, as the title suggests. We are required to do this for a period of not less than 12 months. We do it for a period of two years. The Argus Leader is the only newspaper in Sioux Falls that meets the criteria for a legal newspaper. They've been a good partner with us. We publish about 500, a little over 500 legal notices every year. They're managed by Temera, as a matter of fact, and the cost ranges from about $60,000 to about $80,000, depending on the year and the number of publications that we have. So this designates the official newspaper. This year, we actually have a price decrease per column inch. Last time we did this, it was $6.11 per column inch, but based on circulation numbers, it's now $5.93 per column inch. So with that, answer any questions?
All right, thanks, Tom. Anyone from the public who would like to speak to this item? Good evening.
Scott Hirsman, Sioux Falls. I've thought for a long time that the cities, the municipal league, the lobbyists we pay thousands and thousands of dollars a year for, which I don't know why, when we have a legislative person working for the city. Either way, we should be pushing to get rid of this stupid law. It's dumb. All agenda stuff can be posted online very easily. If anyone doesn't have the internet or doesn't know how to use the internet, they could go down to any public library and get a printed version of the agenda. I didn't know we had a newspaper anymore in Sioux Falls, to tell you the truth. I know they have a website, but I haven't seen a printed version in a really long time. I don't even know what those numbers are. I'm sure they're in the toilet. It doesn't make any sense. And like I said, I know you have no control over it. You have to do this because their state legislature, a group of people who do very little every year, except, you know, take money for themselves and their businesses, you know, you know, have, you know, right ordinances for wealthy people who want to start scooter companies, you know, that's what they do. But anyway, either way, you need to really push hard, and I know some of you have, and I know over the years, counselors have. Bob Litz was a big advocate of doing this. Getting rid of this stupid notice thing, you know, and, you know, getting our meetings to actually work. They were cutting out like an old Chevy today. Once again, not working. You know, access and open government to agendas and policies are very simple. It's not that hard. There's cities across the Midwest in the country that do this. Omaha's a great example. They have a wonderful website. You can go there, you can find anything you want. You don't need to go to a newspaper. You don't need to, don't need to track somebody down. It's all right there. They've figured it out. We could figure it out. It's already there, anyway. I don't know if there's much for us to figure out. I mean, the agendas are up there when they work, but I, if I was you guys, I'd just challenge this and vote no. Then we're not gonna have an official newspaper. Why throw $70,000 a year away on a paper that I, I, has anyone asked them? What is their circulation, their printed circulation? Was it, I, I know usually it's printed in the agenda. I didn't, I didn't look. Does anybody know what the print, what the circulation is? There's 190,000 people that live in the city of Sioux Falls. Do you think they're sending out 80,000 newspapers a day that would probably cover every household, 70,000 newspapers a day? I don't think so. I think the last time I checked it was about two years ago, and it was about, daily circulation was around, hmm, I don't know, 18,000, something like that. So really, you need to really push hard, get rid of this stupid thing. Do it, do it, do it easy. Do it a way to save taxpayers' money. I know that the Argus Leader loves this because it's, it's nice, it's nice little money for them, and they, they always find a way to print the, the agenda that they get paid $70,000 a year for in a newspaper that nobody reads, like a Monday, usually a Monday, you know. That's when they like to put it in there because they don't have any advertisers those days and stuff, so that, you know, it's their, their little slush fund. So, like I said, I'd just vote no. Just say we're not gonna have an official newspaper and leave it at that. And if the state legislature wants to get off their butt and, you know, go a special session and come after you, let them. Or the Attorney General, who's wanted for hitting somebody on the side of the road, we don't see much of him either. You know, it's like cruise control government in South Dakota. That's what I call it.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this? Good evening.
Good evening, guys. My name is Sarah Coop. I'm from Sioux Falls. I actually agree with him, okay? Yeah, COVID, to me, is the perfect example. We had tons of media lie to us, and I'm just sitting here going, the Argus Leader, I don't see much difference between it and Star and Tribune. And I have a hard time believing Garnett and Star and Tribune half of the time. So I, I don't think we should spend $70,000 a year to support a propaganda machine. So I'd like you guys to examine your conscience on it and see if you guys think that they really need the money that they're getting for the work that they are doing. I, I'm just not impressed with my media. I haven't been in a long time, so. But thank you for listening.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this item? All right, Counselors, you got any questions on this? Look for a motion on it, please.
Move to approve.
Second, Jensen.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. Any discussion here? All right, Counselor Breckie, go ahead.
Again, for the benefit of the public, what is it the law, we have to comply with state law on this, don't we?
It states that the governing body shall adopt an official newspaper.
And we, it says that we shall adopt one, and then it also says-
Shall designate.
Shall designate one, and then it also requires us to publish, certain things are still required to-
Correct.
-by law published in a legitimate newspaper.
Yep, minutes, ordinances, notice the bidders, wide range of things.
All right, thank you.
All right, any other discussion before we vote here? All right, let's take a vote. Go ahead, Counsel Erickson.
Thank you, sorry about that. I just wanted, for the benefit of-
You're cutting out on us. We don't have you. Are you there? All right.
It has been tried for well over six years. There's nothing we, you know, we, we continue to try to make some adjustments and changes by having a central housing location to have that open information. But it's just unfortunate. Most times it dies in, in the first committee. It doesn't even get out of committee to the House floor or the Senate floor, and even to the under chamber, other chambers. And so we are at the mercy of state government, and it's, it's not something that just, you just get rid of. That's just not how it works. And so we've looked at making some compromises and some changes to see how we can still uphold that open government, making it more accessible, making it easier to find what you need to find, as well as just not being a subsidy for, for any newspaper. Oftentimes, we're met with resistance in other cities at the legislature because the newspaper are jobs, and this is the backbone to their community for that. So right, wrong, or indifferent, that's just the way it's worked over the last several years, but it's always been on our radar and always something that's been looked about, to trying to make some sort of compromise, but just hasn't gotten across the finish line yet. So just want to make sure that's communicated, and folks understand why it's where we are, and that we are in compliance with state law by passing this. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Counsel Kylie, go ahead.
Yeah, I think what Counselor Jensen was stating when she unfortunately cut out there is this has been a part of our legislative agenda for the last several years, as she had stated, probably at least six out of the last seven that Counselor Erickson and I have been. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. All right, let's take a vote on this item, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Okay, that passes seven to zero. Item 76.
Item 76 is a resolution of the city of Sioux Falls, South Dakota, rescheduling and postponing the business of the city for events in 2022. Sponsor is Councilmember Sale and Knightsert.
Tom, you want to speak this?
This simply changes the dates for the council meetings regarding the elections next year. So the elections next year, regular election is April 12th, and the runoff election is May 3rd. This moves it to the 13th and the 4th respectively, so that we could keep on doing the business of the city. It would also move the informational meetings to that Wednesday.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item? Counsel Jensen.
Mr. Mayor, say, Tom, with the election next year, anyone 18 years and older can run for the election. That's not a felon, right?
Anyone who is a registered voter can-
Registered voter. That's 18 years and older, not a felon, can, can run for the city council.
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Tom? Move approval? Okay. I got a second?
Second, Kylie.
Motion by Jensen, or excuse me, motion by Counsel Selberg, seconded by Counsel Kylie here. Any discussion on that motion? All right, let's take a vote, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
That passes seven to zero. Item 77.
Item 77 is a resolution advising and giving consent to the appointment of members to certain citizen boards, those being Richard Kerr for the Airport Authority Board, Lawrence Long for Charter Revision Commission, and for the Planning Commission, Dana Fisher, Braden Nieses, and John Paulson.
All right, anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight? All right, Counselors, you have, well, let's get a motion. We can see if there's any discussion.
Move to approve.
Second, Breckie.
All right, motion by Kylie, seconded by Breckie. Is there any discussion here? All right, hearing none. Let's take a vote on those, please.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightsert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Item 78, please.
Item 78 is a motion to appoint a committee consisting of Councilmember Greg Knightsert and Chief of Staff Erica Elbeck to the IM26 Task Force to meet with a like committee on the part of Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties to develop ordinances regarding the licensing and regulation of medical cannabis under SDCL 34-20G. Sponsor is the mayor.
City Attorney Koishar, I believe you're gonna speak to this?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The motion itself is relatively self-explanatory. The effort here, of course, has been widely publicized and addressed in our working session from last week, is that Minnehaha and Lincoln County have already passed votes appointing two people each to these, this task force, and, and this proposal is for the city to do the same in order for the three entities to coordinate with each other on what each entity intends to proceed with.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone from the public here to speak on this item tonight?
Scott Hirsman. Here we go again, cruise control government.
Scott Hirsman. Here we go again. Cruise control government. It's passed in November, seventy percent of the vote. We've had since November to do something. The legislators have done nothing. The county commissions have done nothing. The city council's done nothing. And now when we have an opportunity to do something, we're just going to drag our feet and put up some task force and some other stuff. I think Mitchell and Yankton did it best. And I think that the Mitchell attorney quoted in the Mitchell Day of the Republic said quite simply, "We don't want chaos when it comes to July 1st if we have nothing on the books." He says, "We can always put stuff on the books and we can always change them later." What a concept. We elected you as a legislative body like we elect the state legislature. Obviously, they only meet once a year, get paid too much and do very little. But you guys meet every week. How many times have you changed ordinances when you sit at these desks? Hundreds of thousands of times. Has there been any problem with that? How about taxation? Well, you, you up the property tax every year. That never fails. That doesn't seem to bother you. You change ordinances, you change taxation, you change fees. You do this every week. You change zoning, multiple zoning items every, every week. You do all this because you're a legislative body that we elected to do, to this work. But for some reason, when it comes to medical marijuana, passed by the voters, not by the legislature or a legislative body, this is what bothers the legislators. They didn't pass it. So, since it was passed by the people, we're just going to sit on our hands. We're not going to do anything. We're going to wait for this body to do this and this, whatever. We don't want to put any restrictions in place because we might have to change them later. Really? We change zoning all the time. And we tell the people that live around the zoning, "Go to hell." We don't seem to have a problem with that. We don't seem to have a problem with giving away millions of dollars in tiffs. That doesn't seem to bother us. Nobody seems to be worried too much about that. Nobody seems to be worried about the affordable housing issue in town. We try to do legislative things to get that fixed. But for some reason, boy, if we pass something on this medical marijuana and try to change it later, oh, it's going to be a disaster. You know what's going to be a disaster? If you don't have something in place on July 1st, even if it's super very simple. Very simple. And you could always put the caveat in there, just like conditional use permits, that this will change once the legislature meets and gives us recommendations October. You make that very clear in the ordinance. This is not permanent. This is temporary. And people who need to use medical cannabis on July 1st will be able to do so. They won't have to drive three states away. They don't have to track doctors down two states away. They'll be able to do it right here. I understand some of you personally are against marijuana. I get it. But that doesn't matter here. It's like abortion. Some of you are personally against abortion. It's the law. It's legal. Marijuana now is legalized in South Dakota medical part. I'm sure the, the recreation, the Supreme Court's going to overrule that. And, and it's here. It's inevitable. And I can tell you within five years, marijuana will be decriminalized on a federal level very easily. And every state's going to, every state, every city council, every county commission is going to be sitting here trying to figure out what they need to do to regulate it. And like Melissa Mintel said, it's a twenty-four page law. It's done. The law is there. There's no, there's no other work to do. And I, and the thing that bothers me is, how is it that Mitchell and Yankton can figure this out, but the big cosmopolitan city of Sioux Falls, who's going to have rental scooters, can't figure this out? It's not that hard. Don't need a task force. Don't need a bunch of lawyers. The law's written. It's written and it's been passed. I, I sometimes just go, I mean, I could understand if you're trying to craft something from scratch, but that's not the point here. It's all there. It's all ready. You put it in a simple ordinance, says this is what we can do on July 1st, and it'll change in October. Not that hard. Something you do every week.
All right, thanks. Anyone else here to speak on this item?
Dennis Hogan, Sioux Falls. I don't come here to advocate for or against this resolution. What it looks like to me is this could be a discovery process. I don't know the answers. That's why I'm going to be asking questions. And there are questions that I think we need to rigorously research. Like the first one, what is medical marijuana? Eventually, it seems to me that's going to have to have a scientific explanation to it. You don't want it to be like Seattle, where doctors, some doctors set out on the street writing prescriptions to marijuana, you know? Um, and there are other, there are other questions. I'm just hoping this will be a good discovery process. There will be lawyers and there will be doctors that will get up and they can be very influential one way or the other. What I would ask there is that you try to determine whether the lawyer, the professional, doctor, whatever, has a conflict of interest, a financial interest in one way or the other, or whether or not he smokes it himself. And, uh, you know, I think there's, I think there's conflicts. I don't know enough. I sure like to hear where, in a more precise way, how it might conflict with federal law. You know, the feds still have not approved it. And, you know, I found out within the first minute of walking in here that there's an awful lot of questions that need to be rigorously pursued. And I also understand that there's something, was it CBD, which apparently they're selling in the drugs, in the drugstores? Then you go on from there and then if, if it gets down to where the packaging is well-defined, the next thing you have to worry about is knockoffs. And how are you going to control that or who's controlling it? Um, the cartels, of course, are rigorously establishing, uh, you know, getting established in the United States to push drugs. And, uh, that means they're going to have a strong network the way things are going now because the border is wide open. And if you're watching, you know that they're running across the border by the hundreds. And, uh, depends on how well-informed you are. So, you know, I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm not saying that I'm right. I'm just saying, let's ask a lot of questions. And, uh, you know, there's just a lot of questions asked. So I hope we have, we pursue a very rigorous discovery process because we could end up with, there's so much potential here to end up with unintended consequences, one way or the other. And, uh, so I'm, I'm not, I'm not taking any position. I just want to see a good discovery process. And who knows where discovery will lead us in the end? Whether it's the same place or this way or that way. But we need a good, sound discovery process before we jump one way or the other. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this topic tonight? All right, come on up.
Thanks again, guys. Uh, Sarah Coop from Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Um, I guess part of my concerns with this is there is, you know, if you guys don't have bones in place by July 1st, it's actionable. There is tort law. And I, I think that a good lawyer could definitely, uh, create some issues for the city of Sioux Falls on not having those bones implemented. Uh, because it does set us up, average citizens, to getting felonies for months and months. And it sets us up to not being able to get discounts for our medication because the reciprocity won't be in place. And it also makes it so that certain types of medication won't be able to be acquired because some states are not going to allow you to take those out of their state. So I, I beg you guys, please, 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 get the bones in place. Just some way that we can verify who's got a medical order. Uh, I don't know if you guys need to go into ordinances, you know, that far into it, but I am asking you guys to get a database together that says, hey, this doctor is prescribing for this patient this amount of cannabis for this disorder. And that law enforcement is able to verify it. Because it's setting people up to lose, I feel, their lives. If you paid for degrees, kiss them goodbye for a felony. You know? And to me, that, that just doesn't seem fair. After all the hard work that Melissa Malottin and people who have been for cannabis have done in the last three elections? It's been three elections, guys. And every time it's been killed by a rep, not even the people. So please, I, I'm not asking you guys to get in the depth with it, but I am asking you to get the bare bones so that no more damages are incurred to the citizens of South Dakota. Okay? Thanks for listening, guys. I know your job is hard. So, thanks.
All right, thank you. Anyone else here to speak on this tonight? All right, uh, let's get a motion on the floor for this. Move approval?
Second, Breckie.
All right, motion by Selberg, seconded by Breckie. Is there discussion here, counsel? Counselor Knightzert, go ahead.
Uh, I just want to clarify a few, a few things for the public because I think it's important. First of all, um, is regards to timelines. Uh, we're in an unprecedented position where a law was passed which has an effective date, but the rules don't have to be promulgated until months later. That's put, that, that's something that nobody sure has happened before. That puts all local governments into a bind and they're trying to figure out what to do. Uh, local governments have been talking about this. There's two paths you could go down, which is you could adopt ordinances and then potentially change them, or you could adopt somewhat of a pause. We have a, uh, planning commission item tomorrow night, which will, uh, have one of those options up for consideration. And that would come to the city council in the next two weeks. And it would be an emergency ordinance that would go into effect by July 1st. Essentially, we need to, everybody needs to figure out how to handle it on July 1st because there's going to be a lot of confusion because the way in which the law was written on July 1st, yes, there is some legal protection that goes into place. However, rules don't have to be promulgated for businesses until October 29th. And the, the Department of Health is working on it, but they have said it's probably going to be close to that date when those rules will be, will, uh, be released. So we could pass all the ordinances in the world that control how the businesses work, but they can't get a license until that date. So in that interim, we have to figure out what to tell people. And so that's what we're working on. Uh, as it relates to patients, I just want to reiterate once again, we have absolutely no authority over the patient-doctor relationship. In fact, all of the patient information is confidential. We would not have any access to the list of patients, what their conditions are. All of that would be completely out of our hands and it would be illegal for the state to, uh, disclose that. Um, I'm not an attorney. I'm not giving an advice, but it would be my understanding that even when this is legal, it still remains a federal crime to transport marijuana across state lines. So, what can happen on July 1st and what can't? Uh, you should, uh, talk to a competent legal counsel about what, what, what that would mean. Uh, this task force largely would be looking at trying to figure out what regulations to put in place or to bring forward as recommendations because we have two joint areas and both bodies have to agree on those, on those. And the exact scope would have to be still determined. But, um, once again, regardless of what we do, there are dates in which things have to be promulgated. And that is what the drafters, in their wisdom, put in that law. And so it's not going to be until that, those dates that somebody may be able to access a letter from a doctor if they're willing to write that letter, and that they would then be able to go to a business and buy the licensed medical marijuana. So, um, once again, if we do nothing or we do everything in the world, it doesn't change those dates of which the state has to get their work done. And finally, they do have an RFP out right now and they have a whole set of timelines as it relates to the entire cardholder system that'll be out back soon. They'll be looking at those, determining who to award, negotiating a, a contract, getting that in place. They have consultants from other states on board. They're working on that. And they're also working on, uh, drafting rules right now for the business side of it. And they're working closely with the Department of Revenue. So they are working quite feverishly on it, but it's an incredibly complex program to stand up, brand new in a state. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counselor. Other discussion on this item here? Counselor Starr, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I guess I have a couple of questions and I'm not sure who to direct them towards, but my first is, when will this task force be meeting and how do we normally, uh, uh, tell the public when they're going to meet? And, and do we notice it like a public meeting? Um, and are, what are their requirements? I guess we can go to our official publication as we've, uh, determined earlier this evening.
Well, I can, I could speak as, as far as my knowledge goes. Obviously, I can't represent the other members on the, on the task force, but, um, my understanding from the other representations made by the counties, it would be a public body. They would notice it through the normal channels. Um, of course, the task force hasn't been constituted yet because there aren't six members on it. And so at some point, the body would have to just meet and determine their schedule on that sort of thing to be able to publish that.
And then I guess, really, my other question is then, we're moving ahead tomorrow night with the planning commission, whatever item that is. Isn't that too soon then if this, uh, group that we're approving tonight meet? So what, I, I'm confused why we're moving ahead if we're waiting for the task force to, to put things together and make recommendations both for the counties and, and for the city.
Yeah, what we'd have to look at are the, the different deadlines that Counselor Knightzert referred to, which is sort of, you know, the October 29 deadline is the state's sort of deadline on the merits, so to speak, the content of their regulations that they're promulgating. Uh, and the planning commission agenda item tomorrow night is essentially the pause that Counselor Knightzert referred to as the city awaits that. Um, and tonight is just appointing the two individuals, uh, to represent the city on the task force to engage in the dialogue with the, with the counties. So there are three distinct items. We hear a lot of conversation somewhat mixing those items, but the agenda item tonight is literally just appointing these two to that task force.
Who's, if I can, one more. Who's bringing the pause then? Someone has to sponsor it in front of the planning commission. So who's the, the sponsor?
Uh, that would be the mayor. It's been signed off last week.
Perfect. Thank you.
Uh, other points of discussion on the council on this item? Public input's over, ma'am? Public input's over, ma'am? So you're gonna, all right, hearing none. Um, let's take a vote on the motion approved then.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Breckie?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Knightzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, that passes seven to zero. Counselors, any other new business we need to cover tonight? All right, move to, uh, general public input. Uh, just a reminder, input during this, this portion will last no more than three minutes per person. And the public is welcome to speak on topics that we didn't previously discuss in the agenda. So at this time, anyone's welcome to come forward for public input.
Greetings. I'm Davis Alkitas and my first topic tonight is how we could have quieter city life. I was taking a walk in my neighborhood recently and I heard this contraption going. It was obnoxious. So then I did some research. And I discovered this journal article that says that noise does indeed bother people, kind of obvious, and that it reduces our productivity, which means it costs money. There's a citation. And I found this other article that says noise shortens our lives. Too much stress, you don't live as long. There's your reference if you want to take a look. The city's got some legal definitions about noise. There's the first part of it. It's in the city code. Basically, things that bother us. Here's another part of the city ordinance. It says that you can't make a lot of noise, um, but It says that you can't make a lot of noise, but maybe that, some people would say that we're doing it here, so I mean, we should go home. He got it. Go ahead. All right, and I found out all these loud noises that exist in our city, all of which are far beyond the legal limit. A lot of noises. And maybe we can do something about all of those. Here's a way to quiet things down a little bit. We could use portable noise barriers to quiet some road construction noises, make life a little better. Backup beepers in construction sites, those things are obnoxious. Turns out, you can get rid of them with a little bit of technology, so I think we should do that on a citywide basis. Now, there's a group of other noises that maybe we could get rid of, like train horns. I think they're horribly obnoxious. I talked about those maybe a couple of years ago. Dynamic braking, that's when semis put their downshift to slow down their trucks. Those are really loud. Military jets make a whole lot of racket. Maybe we could have them practice somewhere else. All right, so topic two is, what came about with this thing? Well, I was having some emotional trouble about city police sometimes charging innocent people, and then hiring lawyers to protect the police officers, and then a district judge protecting city officials, and then an appeals judge protecting the district judge. Turns out that they won't overturn a bad ruling unless there is gross abuse of discretion, whatever the heck that is. So the moral of the story is that the system protects itself in a wide variety of manners, and that the system oath to uphold our constitution, not as real as you want it to be. And if you want some evidence to that, you can see my appeals case. That's where that's going right now. And the other lesson is that you shouldn't use machinery when you're distraught, or maybe you'll end up with one of these. All right, and in general, we should try to enjoy nature and have a good night. There you go.
All right, thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight?
Scott Hirsman, Sioux Falls. I was a little confused when we were talking about this TIF discussion, when there was an informational about it, the Chirappa 2. As I understand it, the Sioux Steel Project and the Chirappa 2 want the TIF for parking. But it seemed there's a lot of discussion coming out of the dais, that, oh, he's building us, he's building us infrastructure, that's why we need to give it to him. Is a parking ramp infrastructure for us? Do we need more parking downtown? I don't think we do. And, you know, I said, a better way to go about this would be for the city to pay for all the pipes and electrical and roads in the development upfront, because that's what we do all over town. And the developer can do something and follow the free enterprise system and go out and get private investors to come up with the $350 million. He wants to build it. And then he can do whatever he wants to with his development and his parking. And he gets to pay taxes on day one, not day 20 years from now. The crazy part is, what we did at Foundation Park is, we put up over $50 million of taxpayer money, state, county, city, built all the infrastructure for him, and they still got a $94 million TIF. TIFs are a joke. I've read dozens of university studies. These are independent studies, they don't have any connection to business, nothing. They all say the same thing. If you don't use TIFs for their original intent, which is a cleanup blight, they don't do anything. They're just a handout. And this is a prime example. You know very well, and none of you have asked any of these developers this question, can you support this project with private investment? The answer is yes, they can. But nobody asked the question. And one more thing before I go. Riding an electric scooter on the sidewalk is insanity. You are setting yourselves up for some really big-time lawsuits. You need to change that in that ordinance. Those things belong on a street. That's how the other cities do it.
Anyone else for public input tonight?
Sierra Brewster, Sioux Falls. We had some incidents in Pettigrew on rental properties. 15, 20 calls for service on a rental property. I'm going to ask Council, I'm going to get with other neighborhood associations on Sunday, and we're going to pack this house, because you're not understanding my mouth. So we have rich people, middle class, and poor people on neighborhood association boards. And we need to start finding these landlords, $175 a police call for services. This is not Chicago. This is not Los Angeles, California. The police says, "Yeah, we got to do something, because the landlords are starting to victim these people. I'm tired of coming to these calls and arresting these people." So, we'll be doing that here shortly, coming up in the upcoming weeks. I went to, in the middle of this protest at the police station two weeks ago, with African-Americans and Spanish people, about 35 to 40. And so, I spoke to them, so we can break it up, and then they can go their own ways. And the African-American community needs to work on African-American crime here, and then the Mexicans need to work on Mexican crime here. Because I'm going to tell you something here, is, one of the people in the protest said, "Why isn't the police accredited?" And I said, "Wait, that's coming, because we're going to pack this house, and we're going to force it down Council's throat, to make the Council members, put it in the budget, the money to get accredited. We need accreditation. Or then we can just go to y'all's rich houses, and then we'll just start dropping off all the crime there, and then y'all deal with it." Because that's what's going to happen next. We're going to have the southeast and all of these rich areas, $1.1 million houses, we'll just drop them off, and y'all worry about it. We need to do that. The Police Department needs to be accredited. On behalf of the Police Department here, the African-Americans seem that the Police Department has all of this chaoticness going on with police brutality and all that, but I'm going to tell you something here. Officer Anderson is an African-American police officer from Los Angeles, California. Very respectable, professional African-American officer. And when these uneducated black folks sit there and bash the Police Department, we're bashing the African-American police officers that work for the Police Department. So they need to step back and realize that we only have not just white people on that Police Department force, but we have blacks and Vietnamese and Russians on that Police Department force.
Thank you. Anyone else for public input tonight? All right, seeing none, just need a motion to adjourn us out?
Move to adjourn.
All right, move by Kylie, seconded by Jensen. We'll roll call vote this.
Councilmember Starr?
Yes.
Brecky?
Yes.
Erickson?
Yes.
Jensen?
Yes.
Kylie?
Yes.
Neitzert?
Yes.
Selberg?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned, 7:00. Have a good night, everybody.